Good morning.
I'd like to call this meeting to order, if that's okay? Is it okay? Is it 11:00 o'clock? It's 11:02. Okay. Uh, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Durumba?
Here.
Councilman DeWitt?
Here.
Councilman Schlack?
Here.
Mayor Simmons?
Here.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Here.
Councilman Gibson?
Here.
And it's not on the agenda, but I'd like to have Councilman Schlack to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please.
You'll be honored. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, public comments, please.
Good morning, Benita. Yeah, love this town, yeah. I see recently that the fire and rescue of Benita Springs is found a location on Hickory Boulevard. It's a commercial property, it's on a good location. I approve it, now I'm only one person, but I live down the street. It's near the turn by the water tower, and there's a lot of accidents on that turn over the years, and I really approve that location, and hope we move forward without any problems. And you guys are gonna do a good job for us, I know. Thank you.
Good noon, City Council, and congratulations to all of you who were on this time. I'd like to bring to the council's attention an idea that was proposed by the Communications Advisory Board back in 2007. It's a way to communicate via email, under the sunshine law, a way that we explored, proposed, the Naples Daily News editor then printed the whole opinion piece about it, quoted my opinion, my idea verbatim. The Attorney General of Florida issued an AGO, an Attorney General opinion, a year later for the city of Delray, basically validating the idea. We have the idea, it's almost cost-free, it's a way to make the council and all boards more productive, and hopefully you will consider that.
Thank you.
Hello. I'd like to welcome the new members of the council, and congratulations, and hello to the old members of the council who have been here for years. My name is John Pano, I own and operate CGT Kayaks here in Benita Springs. I also am here today representing the Benita Springs Downtown Business Alliance. We recently formed, recognizing the fact that the city has invested so much in downtown and is dedicating so much to that area, we felt that if we combined our resources and worked together, we could work with the city and accomplish much more. We recently sent the board members, all, council members, all, some of our proposed options or things that could be done to help. I would like to basically state our mission, which is collaboration, communication, education, advocacy, and awareness for the community and for the local businesses. A couple of points we would like to touch on is the sign ordinance along the old 41 corridor, and hope we could work out some issues with that, road closures, of course, and of course the ever-growing parking issue down there as we have more and more things happening. We want to increase and work with the city and communicate with them directly. We hope to see a downtown map for kiosks, help people find their way downtown. And we are having some issues with the recent construction, we've had several businesses come to us worried about closures because they just can't operate with the road options right now, and we could talk to the council at a later date if that would be all right with them. Okay? Thank you.
Anybody else? Obviously, this is an organized meeting, but kind of free-flowing, if you will. We do have a list attached of some items of interest, and then I think we all received this morning, maybe it was last night, I'm not sure, Deputy Merrill Flynn had kind of organized a bit, so I guess maybe the first thing I'd like to address, do we want to go off of this items of interest, or do we want to go off kind of a outline that Deputy Merrill Flynn had put together? Is there a preference? Yes, Councilwoman Durumba?
I have preference to go off of the organized list, at least starting off with the vision that's articulated from historic efforts in the comprehensive plan, and, you know, after we go through certain sections of it, we can go down the other list and see if we covered everything. I, coincidentally, at the same time, let me just make a little aside here, it would be so nice if we could talk to each other, because while he was doing his stuff, I was sitting at home doing my stuff, and I had a lot of other things to do, and he did a much better job than I did, so I'd rather go with his list.
You guys are great, 'cause I wasn't doing it. You guys are wonderful.
Well, you should have called us and told us that you were doing it, and then we knew we wouldn't have to do it. But anyway, I very much appreciate the effort that Peter O'Flynn made, and I think it's really good, and I really liked the beginning, because one of my, I don't know, issues that I had during the campaign that I talked a lot about when I was going, or talking to people, was that I was totally subscribed to the community vision, and I think it's important to start there, and when I tried to explain to people why that was not just a softball response, and how important it was to integrate everything we're doing, I think the way Councilperson O'Flynn has structured it, we can see how all these things fit together if you start with that vision and try to do what you can for it, so I'm sorry for a long.
No, 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 that's great. Councilman Schlack, would that be okay with you?
I don't have, my question would be to Carl, what about our facilitator?
You will have a facilitator here on May 3rd?
On May 3rd.
That will take you through the vision, mission, values, and the objectives. I fully anticipated that the discussion council would have today would probably assist you in getting through May 3rd more quickly. But again, today is whatever the council wants to talk about.
I, no problem, whichever way we want to go.
Okay. Councilwoman DeWitt?
Same thing, just for those of us who didn't bring iPads or whatever, can we get it printed out so everybody has it?
Sure, absolutely. Absolutely? I say absolutely, I don't know where absolutely is, but. All right, here comes absolutely. Fantastic.
If we're gonna make, if people want to do it, maybe give, hand them out.
Absolutely.
Oh, that word again, absolutely. All right. Councilman Gibson?
Sounds good to me.
Who's grown his playoff beard, I might add, for the hockey team, who we ended up with series one to one on Saturday, right?
I'm sorry.
When's game three?
Why does he have?
Everblades.
Oh, he keeps it on till we lose.
Is it tonight?
Yeah.
The Florida Everblades, anyway, that's his playoff beard, so. Councilman Forbes?
That's fine.
I assume Peter's okay with you?
Everybody else is okay.
Or are you against what you organized? Okay, so in the interest of maybe not everybody having it in front of them, do we have it in front? Who does not have it in front of them? And can he, he can look there for the moment, is that okay? I just want to make sure anybody, okay. I don't want to handicap anybody out of the gate here.
Why don't we just read some of that beginning stuff?
Peter, do you want to start with this? You did put together your rationale and your thoughts, yeah, as we get going here?
Yeah. No, my notion was to start with a basic statement of vision, and this is just what I'm throwing down, obviously, for the group to decide. A basic vision for Benita, which is not, I don't think, very controversial, which is that Benita Springs shall reach its potential as one of the great small cities in the United States. And then I thought, a vision, and then off the vision, deliverables off the vision. And the interesting thing that I've, to me, that I've noticed over time, is that that original comprehensive plan, which is the current comprehensive plan of the city, has in it, at the very beginning, two pages that say, Benita Springs tomorrow, the vision. And it lays out what I think is a great vision for town, and it's one that, at the time, hundreds of people got together and worked on, so it's not like somebody plucked it out of the air, and it's persisted over time. So, that's really all I did. I took what was, what was that vision, so I can, I can read, do you want me to read stuff? Does that make sense? Whatever you guys want.
I think so.
For the audience.
Yes.
Yeah, so, there are several elements, and I'll read the elements. The first is foster a sense of place. The second is ensure connectivity. The third is preserve small-town charm, and these are in no particular order. Revitalize downtown, be a leader in environmental protection. Then three actually weren't mentioned there, because I think they were more focusing on physical elements, and so I added in maximize government transparency, a keen eye on financial stewardship, and promote desirable economic development. So, let me just read, and what I'm reading is what was written in 2000. Preserve small-town charm, start with that. A community of human scale, one in which we can afford to live, and with which we can identify as individuals. Foster a sense of place. Quote, walkable community that is pedestrian-friendly, vehicular traffic should move easily through a continuous attractive street system with planted medians, and strategically placed statuary. That's in the com plan. U.S. 41 Benita Beach Road should be beautiful commercial parkways. Welcoming features should clearly announce the location of city limits, a community with outstanding parks and recreation facilities. The third one is ensure connectivity. Quote, and I'll say again, this is from 2000, a continuous system of safe shaded bicycle paths should connect homes, shopping, and workplaces. Public access to vistas of the estuary rivers and creeks should be preserved, and linear parks should wind through the natural and developed areas of the city. Revitalize downtown. Quote, a focus for both daytime and evening activity, and a meeting place for families, teens, singles, and senior citizens. There should be a mix of restaurants, retail shops, and services, publicly sponsored activities, and entertainment, all complemented by the ambiance of the surrounding neighborhoods and the Imperial River. Next one is environmental protection. Quote, Benita Springs should be a Florida leader in municipal protection of the environment, a quote "green" unquote city, because of its protection of natural systems, pristine beaches, and greenways through environmental consciousness and stringent pollution controls. End quote. Then I added in what I think are natural, subject obviously to discussion, all of this is, maximize government transparency. What I put was, a place where citizens participate in government processes, and all steps needed are taken to assure appropriate citizen access to government processes. A keen eye on financial stewardship. Achievement of all our strategic goals must be accomplished in the most cost-efficient manner. Efficient operation of government and keeping taxes low underpins quality of life. And the last one was promote desirable economic development, and what I wrote was, the highest quality economic development is derivative of achieving realization of other strategic goals set forth above. In other words, build it and they will come. So, that's what I took a shot at, guys, it's just, you know, whatever you think.
Amy, did you?
No, I was just gonna say, this is from 2000, now that the revisions are, like most current ones, has the same kind of wording in the beginning.
Exactly, yeah, right.
Okay, all right, good.
Anybody else's thoughts or comments, or?
No one liked it?
I think it's fine.
Well, I think it puts it in perspective, some historical perspective, if you will. It organizes it well. What's, what's everybody think in terms of the overall, I guess, direction?
I think it's the direction that the past council and this council is striving for. I mean, when you talk about the revitalization of downtown, it's already working.
Yep.
We've been working with the bike, the walkable streetway, so I mean, I think it's something we've already, since 2000, been striving for.
Right.
I think it's something that we need to continue on that same path. I mean, there's no reason to deviate from it, because I don't think the attitude of the community has changed from this. This is what we wanted in 2000, and I think it's still what we want today, just to improve upon it and go forward with.
Right. Yeah. Steve, additional thoughts, or?
I agree totally with what Greg said.
Mike? Fred?
I, I agree in general, but I disagree, because if it was, as Greg said, we wouldn't have gotten the different comments during the campaign from different people who were calling on people, that they felt that the residents weren't being listened to, and that, and all that, so I think, I think we should understand that even though we may think we were moving in that direction, I don't think unanimously by a long way, the residents felt that way.
I think there's always different points of view on what a building should look like, or a bikeable, walkable path should look like. I think you're always gonna have that, because there's, no matter what you do in life, you're never gonna get 100 percent, never.
Right.
And, and I do have to comment on the last three things, and it kind of goes to what Councilman Forbes was saying, the last three things that the councilman put in there about keeping an eye, everybody's more mindful now on their money. They kind, that we just went through a bad recession, or an economic downturn, so that's fresh on everybody's mind. I think those last three things, keeping a mindful watch on their monies is what's important. So I think that leans to what Commissioner Forbes, or Councilman Forbes was saying about people were a little bit taken back by the dollar signs of the old 41 area, the revitalization. So I think that's where you may get the discrepancy of the fight of, hey, we're spending all this money, but I still think it's the vision, which is what we want, is something downtown, along Imperial River. There's a reason why the city and everybody, those chunks of land, a bamboo mobile village and stuff were purchased for the future.
Right.
So, right now, we're just, I think, trying to accept what we think is the vision, and then we could go through all these things and say, well, are we accomplishing it? Where aren't we accomplishing it? Where have we gone down the wrong path? And I concur with, I have to call you Councilman Forbes.
Whatever you want.
With Fred.
Freddie, he prefers Freddie.
This is a workshop, I'm gonna call you Fred, excuse me. I agree about the transparency, that's what I saw really clearly in, in my campaign, and I think that, that we probably could do a better job there. But, you know, you could always do a better job, so, and that's, you know, I'm gonna, that's one of my planks, if you could say, and that was things that I talked about.
All of us, and, and, whether elected or not elected, everybody can do better.
Right. And I know that, you know, we have staff that's gonna be working on that, so, I'm gonna try to execute it if you people don't want to do it, so hopefully we'll all do it together.
Right, 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 right.
And I agree with Greg, it's always, it's life, and this is always a work in progress. Yeah, it'll never be perfect, but we'll try to strive to get there.
And we're trying to do what we think's the best, I mean, I mean, that's it.
Right, right. Absolutely. Okay, well, Carl, I'm gonna, go ahead, Peter, please.
What about the statement of the vision? I, you know, I just took a shot at that. Benita Springs shall reach its full potential as one of the great small cities in the United States, it's just like a basic topic sentence.
I, seeing how we're being informal here, I'll start with you, Fred.
No, I think it's, I think it's fine as written.
Okay. I think it's fine as written, I'm not saying we need to elaborate on it, but wouldn't be opposed to elaborating on it if needed.
Right.
Mike?
No, it's great, because, like you said, we can elaborate on it, get a little more in there.
Greg?
Yeah, no, I agree with the council so far, I mean, it sounds good.
Steve? Okay, okay. Amy?
I'm just curious, what is our?
Oh, that's right, I'm coming around to you, that's.
Do we have a vision that's expressed already in, in the ear, or in the comprehensive plan, or is this, we're just?
Yeah.
What does it say? Is that what it says?
No, it does not say that, I don't know what it said.
Well, that's all my question.
That's a good question.
What is, what is, what does it say now? Does anybody know? Okay. It's fine, I mean, it's, it's good, but I'd like to see.
I don't know that there is one sentence, and that's why I took a shot at it.
Okay, okay.
Carl, any thoughts here? You wanna?
Council's pleasure, sir.
Yeah, yeah, all right, just, not that anybody won't feel free to butt in, but please. Maybe I'll quit calling on people, just, I guess maybe that would be better for the moment. Go ahead, Peter.
So, should I continue? Is that all right? Yeah. So Carl was kind enough to send around the spreadsheet that was in what was sent out, and I assumed from that 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 was going to be used, I thought it was a logical assumption. So, what it was, if people have seen it, is kind of, I think, a chronological catalog of questions that have been asked by various council members and new council members, and I thought I would just take a shot at organizing it, because since it seemed to be chronological, there were various topics that were related that were in different places. So, that's what my attempt is here, on implementation steps off the vision. Now, let me mention one thing real quick. There is something in our charter that I think is a great provision, that says that once a year, a city council should give direction, I think it says in writing, to the city manager on what the priorities are for the next year. So, there's obviously a lot here, we may agree, we may disagree on some of it. I think there will be a lot of coming out of whatever strategy we have. This is not meant to be a list of everything Carl needs to do in three days.
We'll give him four. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. So, so my notion is, if people think it's sensible to go through, and there may obviously be plenty of other things that have to be added, and maybe stuff taken out, to come up with a set of implementation steps off the vision, but then the next step off of that would be giving city management something practical to work with going forward. We may have to pick and choose, although it's all there in terms of the vision and implementation strategy, so. So, what I did was simply go back to each vision item, so the first one is foster a sense of place, and I, I connected that, if you will, with ensure connectivity. And these are the items that were on the sheet that Carl handed out, and if you're looking for references, they're in the brackets behind each item, and I've added some in that didn't make its way to that sheet, but are things that we've, we've talked about, some of us have talked about, people talked about in their campaigns, there's a lot of chat about a lot of this. So, the first one I just chose was transportation, people are right, we're talking about that. And what you see here is, and I'll read the five of them. Complete and commence execution of the visioning plan. Prioritize beach road visioning project nodes and ability to execute. Complete the quadrant study plan of U.S. 41 Benita Beach Road intersection, providing capacity improvement by developing alternatives to the intersection. Four, advocate for additional east-west connector, east west connections, including Veterans Memorial Parkway just south of Benita Springs in Collier County. And for those who are not aware of what that is, it doesn't exist yet, except it exists off of Imperial Parkway, which they call Livingston south of us, before you get to Amocley Road, there's a cut that goes into the school there, and there's a right-of-way on the Collier County map, because that is Collier County, that goes, I actually think all the way to Vandville Road.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I know the MPO has, Collier MPO has talked about that, but in terms of providing capacity relief to Beach Road, that's a possibility, that's, but that's what that is. And five was review current transportation priorities for consistency with vision. And that was yours, Amy, I assume that was off this current, as indicated on CIP.
Right.
Yeah. So that's.
Yes, Steve.
If there's somebody in the audience, I noticed there was a hand that was raised, and they wanted to comment, can they do that, or is it only for public comment? At public comment?
I'm free to let public dive right in here, but what does the rest of council think, or what do we need to adhere to here, Carl? Any thoughts?
Council's pleasure.
Okay, would it be all right if, whatever you want to do, as we go along here?
Maybe one suggestion is do it by topic, so.
Yeah, okay, no, absolutely, absolutely. And I'm gonna dis.
I tried to swing around as best I could.
It was me, I'm saying.
No, please, do you wanna?
Come on down.
Make a comment, please.
Well, you were asking, is there a vision statement? Yea, verily, there is in the com plan, and it's right in the beginning, and it's about three-quarters of a page long, so it's much more detailed than, than what Peter has here, although I don't disagree with what he's written. But I think, in my mind, we need to keep a vision statement that is more detailed, because it, it's easier to follow from it. I do like the way he's laid these out. And some of the things that he has said here, I'm gonna move this down just a little bit. Some of the things that he has said here, I believe probably are pulled directly from the vision statement.
Magic.
Yeah, a walkable community, that is in the vision statement. A system of safe shaded bicycle paths, the bicycle path part is in there, and Carl knows all this too, I'm sure. Community of human scale, that is in there. About activities, a meeting place for families, teens, single, teens, singles, and senior citizens. I believe they just say for all types of people and all, all levels of income, and that's the, that's the intent, so that everybody can enjoy it. And it talks about being a green city, and probably most of the rest of it. So, yes, in fact, there is, is a vision statement, and I personally believe it is a good one, and it lays out enough details in the statement that we can follow them and do what, what Peter has done, and lay out strategies. That's all. Thanks.
Quick question. Yes, Greg?
What, what Peter's written here, it's not changing any, anything, it's just a guide for us for today, so it's not changing the vision statement, or any of that stuff in, anything, it's just something, a work, a copy that we're working with today for our strategic workshop, okay, so the public knows, we're not looking to change any vision statement that's already been written somewhere else.
Right, right, good point. Fred, yes?
We could actually just make that part of the com plan an annex to this thing here for the record, and then you got the best of both worlds.
How about transportation, and what do people think?
I've got a couple of que, I think what you have is great, and I don't know whether this would be the place to add or not, but don't we need kind of a quarterback for all this stuff? Do we need to say that as a point? This is clear to me that we don't exactly have one.
What do you mean, a quarterback?
Well, I mean, we've got, we've got Tool, we have McMahon, they're out working, we're about to give a contract for some work for, for, with McMahon and all that, and so where is, where is, I would think that we want to have somebody that's really a premier traffic engineer, whether they be on staff, somebody that we pay from another government entity to help us, or an expert that we have on a contract that's kind of directing the traffic. I mean, that's just an observation. I think we have a lot of great things going, I think we're on the right track, but we don't have a, the quarterback or the coach or.
Isn't that what Matt is?
Pardon?
Isn't that what Director Feeney is, isn't he kind of in charge of?
No, no, I don't think all these things that we've got going on are under his direction.
I'm just referring to the transportation side of it.
And is Director Feeney a traffic engineer? Because on transportation, that's why.
The answer is, he's not.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I mean, my responsibility as city manager is to make sure this is all coordinated.
Right.
And I realize that you're not, some of these things will not be under all the same director.
Right.
Especially when you've got a director who has got a significant amount of projects already on his plate. But I can understand the need for someone who is qualified to be coordinating the projects, perhaps of multiple consultants, and I understand that.
Well, and what, what I'm saying is, is like, for example, we have Tool, that's the visioning people, then we have McMahon that, is that right?
McMahon.
Yeah, that's doing the quadrants thing by this contract that's supposed to be approved at the end Wednesday, and then we have another contract with them that's out doing sidewalks and bicycles, and it would seem to me that, I would think actually, that at the moment, that Tool ought to have, we ought to be seeing his input or their input before these things are worn off. I think they're all great.
So to use your analogy, right, I mean, you don't have 10 wide receivers lined up and no quarterback to throw the ball, everybody running their patterns, but not necessarily running as organized and succinctly as they should.
And I'm not being critical. And I'm not being critical of what we've done. I think it's great, I think it's great that we jumped on all these things. I'm just a little concerned that we could end up having some issues because it's not fully coordinated by experts.
What, and I think I understand where you want to go with this, Fred. What do your, what would your suggestion be, or what would?
I just, well, I think we ought, we may want to add a line or something that says that.
There actually is an item further down, which is kind of similar to what you're saying.
Right. It probably goes across the whole, anything to do with the vision, because vision is transportation. It's quality of life, it's bikes, it's sidewalks, it's all that stuff.
And Carl and I have chatted about the general concept from a slightly different angle, which is we have all these transportation balls up in the air, including the bike stuff. And we're quote-unquote government light, but can government light sometimes be a little financially heavy?
And that's my worry about that.
Well, no, I actually go the other way. In other words, if you had someone who, it's a question of cost. So if you had someone who's a qualified traffic engineer, so right now, if you look at the McMahon contract, which is on the green sheet for Wednesday, it has $35,000 in there for basically dealing with other government agencies. And, you know, one question would be, we're gonna have the same thing with Tool or?
Right.
Or, you know, and a bike, you know, you know. So would it make sense to have someone, perhaps that works for another government agency, I don't know if that person exists, that we could share, that could, I would call it what you want, coordinate, so you're not paying people on an outside contract? Could that be more cost efficient?
And I'll apologize.
And that's for Carl, you know.
And I'll apologize upfront, because I knocked that version. What, wouldn't that be something like the MPO?
Right. Someone out of there.
Someone out of there, or, and kind of going along with the same transportation, where you talk about the complete quadrant study. And again, I apologize, I know that's a four-letter word in the room. Traffic study with O-41 and a flyover. The way I'm kind of reading this and the vision that we're seeing, we're wanting to do another study, or look at that quadrant, or do something we're gonna have to do.
Which one is that?
Number three, I guess.
Well, that's what McMahon was doing. That's what Wednesday's deal.
Well, and I guess that's kind of my question going back on it. Maybe put a cart before the horse for Wednesday night, or Wednesday morning, rather. Now, we're paying for this, and again, I know it's the bad word, couldn't we have got it for free a couple of years ago? With the MPO study?
Yeah, if you want to go back, my view is that was an overpass study.
Okay. And again, and again, I don't know, and that's why me and I know.
It was in the city budget at the MPO, the PDNE study said which way the flyover gonna go. Some people said it's a corner study. My view is it was an overpass study that required looking at the corner.
Gotcha.
But that's the past.
Yeah, that's the past.
Now, let's keep talking about it, please. No, but please.
To Greg's point, though, there is a possibility, and it'll depend on the people that are the representatives to MPO, the alternate representative, maybe other visitors to MPO, that we may be able to get MPO and FDOT to fire up a study, but it would not include an overpass.
Correct. Yeah. That's what I'm looking, either through a grant or through something else instead of on the taxpayers' back.
Right. And, oh, I'm Steve, go ahead, I'm sorry.
But if I remember correctly, the federal grant for that overpass had to include a flyover.
Gotcha.
Otherwise, no money.
Yeah, but that was only because it was a certain kind of a line item in the federal budget that required it. If they get the money from a different way, then you can do a study like you're talking about, it would not have to have a flyover as part of it. I just, I think we ought to do more in it, maybe, I know before the Great Wall of Silence called the election came down, I know Peter and I had some discussions one time about, maybe there could be at least initially some kind of a task force. I think he probably has better ideas on it than I do, but maybe that could be at least an interim step to kind of have a more of a quarterback feeling or whatever.
But to Greg's point, I do think there's a good possibility that FDOT, go back, when the overpass study, I'll use that word, pardon me, the overpass study was canceled. The visioning study was suggested by, actually, Mayor Simmons. And the senior leaders at FDOT at that time said, we think that's a great idea, that visioning study. Commissioner Hattaway and his assistant, she has since gone to Tallahassee, still with FDOT, said, no shit, they called it a car study. And what they said at the time was, we're waiting for Benita Springs to, we're excited about that concept, because it had a lot of what FDOT, particularly FDOT District One is interested in, bikable, walkable, moving cars through and all of that, you know, in it, as a potential, didn't exist yet. So I think the point you make is a fair one, but meaning, hey, why do three? Why don't we go back to them?
Right.
But I think, Carl, I think you think it's best to move forward with three. Is that fair?
Yes.
Yeah. Do you want to say, explain, because we've talked about it.
Specifically?
The McMahon quadrant study.
Yeah. Matt has been in communication with McMahon over this ever since we realized this was, you know, becoming, it's evolving as a very, very top priority for this council. And McMahon has recommended these next steps be taken. And yes, there is an expense to it, but I will also tell you that we've been in communication with Tool over the prospect of this contract being reviewed by council Wednesday night. And Tool is in favor of it being adopted by council and moving forward. And that, and that was found out by Arlene in some discussions with Tool as recently as Friday. So I think it makes sense to move forward. We do not, we do not want to move so quickly we make mistakes. And I understand that that's a lot of discussion here. How do we coordinate and make sure we don't have missteps? And we're concerned about that as well. But if we've got a clearly defined next set of steps, then we are recommending the council favorably consider it and move it forward. In the meantime, while that, while that process is going on, while that study is going on, to better define the alignments of the roads, and the costs, and all those kinds of things, staff and council can be working together to better define the process and the coordination of the process as we move forward. Because Tool's gonna be back in May for their final report out. And then you're going to have the connectivity study for McMahon due back in September, and then this would take a little bit of time as well. So you really only have McMahon and Tool in the process at this point, so. And I'll just, oh, I'm sorry. And I'll just throw out there, for what it's worth, this and a grain of salt is maybe a grain of salt, but in my mind, you know, and you run the risk of other people saying, oh, no, what about, I think we need to build an amazing budget this budget season, we need to look at these type of questions and discussions. And I have blinders on for addressing the traffic problem. No two ways about it. No two ways about it. And I say that at the risk of other people thinking, no, not at all, but I just, I think we need to address head-on our budget, and we need to address head-on this traffic.
I'm in favor of the council doing some of this coordination with the staff's input here. I don't think we need to have another intervenor that we'd have to interact with at this point and explain what we're doing. But we have some studies that have already been done, like the bike and more. I think we could have another workshop. This just illustrates that we need to have some working workshops, instead of just being up in the council passing on specific proposals. Because we are trying to develop a strategic process here. And I have read, you know, I have looked at some of the studies, but I feel like they need to be connected, just as Fred has suggested. Whether someone to do that connection is necessary at this time or not, I don't feel, have a strong feeling that way. And, you know, I would rely on staff to make the first pass. I think we should meet again and go over these studies, every one that we have. We have the bike study too, right? We have some implied stuff going on, like even the sidewalk, sidewalk work is doing some, you know, some handling these kinds of things, the multi-modal approaches. So we need to just, to look at it all at the same time, and in an organized fashion.
Fred?
Oh, I want to give you a case in point. I know I talked to Carl about this, and I think I briefly discussed it with Arlene, but I had an idea that one of the things that would make a major improvement to the flow of traffic on Benita Beach Road was to, first of all, get the lights synchronized, put traffic sensors in, and also have them controlled by a computer that in real time can analyze the traffic conditions and in real time make adjustments to the timing of the lights for the traffic that's going that day. I found out some interesting things. Well, first of all, so there's full disclosure. Arlene and I called Tool, and they said they didn't recommend much go into that because it was, just based on their experience, they thought the quadrant thing would be a big bang for the buck, so to speak. And I said, well, I'm not proposing not to do quadrant, this would be in addition to. Then I got the name of, what is Ted?
Ted Trish.
Ted Trish. And I called him, and he actually had a different point of view. So we have two, two experts, which is not unusual.
Right.
It's kind of like a turn exception. But he said, depending on what's there, it's a good idea, and it would be a significant change in the cost. So he talked to Lee Dot, and I had a chance to talk to him, I think it was Friday. Here's what he came back with. He said, actually, we're in better shape to this end than he hoped for. We, there's two loops that are tied together. There's one loop that starts at the ramp immediately east of I-75, and I believe it goes, I think it goes as far as Spanish Wells. But I think there's a gap in the loop then. And then the next loop goes from 41 to that light down by docks, right, you know, right after you leave docks coming this way. And both of them are synchronized. Both of them have a computer that could do that real time. That software is not there, and he said there is a, they would like to make a connection from the one at Spanish Wells on to the west, so that the two kind of come together, but they would be separate loops. Now, what was most interesting thing that he said was, that he asked them if they had done any work on redoing, lights synchronizing, any of this stuff. And he said, the answer came back no, and that the reason is, now, this is, this is an important, we'll say, you know the old expression, the squeaking wheel that squeaks the loudest gets the grease? And for whatever reason, even though we've all been in the traffic jams, including staff, that there's not been some formal complaints lodged with the OT. And so what we need to do is to set up a process where those things are coming in there, so we get some of the grease.
Right.
So that's, so there is hope, and it would make an improvement. Would it solve the problem? No, it would just be, and it would not cost tons of money, because a lot of the stuff is already there.
Well, I know the lights aren't synchronized the right way, because just the other night, I was going to the Everblades game, and I got stuck at the traffic light at Home Depot. And as soon as that one turned green, or just before it turned green, the next one went yellow. So then I was stuck at that one. And right before that one turned green, the next one turned yellow, all the way to the interstate. And, you know, it's just ridiculous.
Yeah, I think he said that they hadn't done much with Benita Beach for a couple years.
But I mean, the big thing is, we need to kind of fast-track looking at the 41 Benita Beach Road intersection.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Like the mayor suggested.
Yeah.
Because I know one of the big things with the flyover study, when it was shot down, one of the people that couldn't believe that we turned it down, was like, what are they turning down? This is something that's for 20 to 25 years into the future. We don't need to fix 25 years into the future, we need to fix now. And that's why we need to be looking at this quadrant study and try to get things moving right now.
And that was why I was really pursuing the lights, because even if we, we move forward with quadrant thing, by the time those quadrants are designed and built and open, a lot of time, I'm not gonna say a lot, two to three years could go by. This thing that I'm talking about could be something that could be done if you get the money and the attention, the grease, so to speak, on a squeaking wheel. You could have an improvement, you know, in a year, 18 months. That'd be great.
Well, I for one am in favor of that, Fred, and thanks for doing what you've done. As a council, what, what do we, any, let me just say, any disagreement with looking into the synchronization of the lights?
No, I think if we're talking about this kind of in general terms, what we should say is that we should have to look at both near-term improvements and long-term improvements. And we could, and there might be some other ideas that we haven't focused on, because we've been focusing on really fixing the problem. So I think these small improvements will make a big difference, certainly in the short term. And they couldn't but help what we do all the longer term too, so.
Right.
And maybe, maybe. I'll add that in. Anything else on transportation?
On the traffic lights, is there a difference between Lee County, Collier County, who handles traffic lights? Is it still FDOT, or is it the local level? Because I've noticed driving around in Naples, I've been down there more often lately, their signals kind of seem to be smarter. As I pull into a turn lane, before I get to the light, it knows I'm in there and it changes the light. I'm down there more in the evenings versus the day. But it's like, every time I pull into a turn lane, that light's green by the time I get there.
I think that's probably because they got more, they got sensors on most of these addresses.
Yep.
And we don't.
Okay, Matt, you want to answer the question? Who handles the, who handles the lights, Collier County versus Lee? Come on up, Beth. And why do they work so much better down there than here? No, wait, that wasn't the question. Calls for speculation.
The very simple answer is our lights are, on our network or on the roads other than Benita Beach Road and US 41. The ones that the city owns are maintained by Lee County through contract. In addition, we receive dollars from the state that we pass on to Lee County to maintain our lights on US 41 as part of that grid network. So they are essentially maintained by Lee County traffic signals. I believe the gap that Councilman Forbes referred to is at the railroad, and it is a function of the fiber going underneath the railroad and a payment of lease terms for that connection. Lee County has approached us about that, which would connect the grid and allow it to be a little more reactive, in addition to the software. Your question about, Councilman, about in Collier County, some lights run on different protocols depending on the road. A lot of the complaints, and we do have complaints on record about the intersection here that we forward to Lee County, pertain to folks crossing the roadway. When a pedestrian crosses the intersection at US 41, it's a very broad intersection, and it steals time from the turning movement. So sometimes that causes a friction point, and it takes a while for that to then work itself out of the system.
Matt, how tall, is it, would we all be best off to get our constituents to write complaints that go to you, and then you're gonna forward to Lee Dot? Because apparently, the amount of complaints they get from us is not as big as they get from other, on other roads.
Councilmember, I would recommend that we take a run at it as a, as a city. We know what the complaints are. And again, this is kind of goes back to our orientation meeting where we talked about we're gonna need some political leadership with regards to being liaisons to the elected officials up in the county. We like to try to handle things staff to staff, and if that doesn't work, then we'll need your support to assist us with the elected officials up there. That's what I'd recommend. Matt, you okay with that approach?
I would recommend the same. I, we do have a pretty, I mean, it's not, it's not an everyday complaint, but we do have a list of complaints that, you know, that have gone up to, and I think it just needs to be elevated to a, to a political level.
Yeah. I mean, just for example, and I had never noticed anything kind of quite this blatant. I was coming, I was off of Benita Beach Road, opposite Vanderbilt, and I'm not sure what that side road is. It's kind of a one-way road.
Luke.
Luke, okay, Luke. I sat there for three lights, and it never did change. You know, I would see the lights change, I would see the people at Vanderbilt, they would turn right, they would turn left, that light would change, but it never changed at Luke, so I even backed up. I'm like, I wonder if I went over it too quick and it didn't read it, what have you. So then finally, after three lights, I did, I took a right-hand turn, went
So then finally, after three lights, I did, I took a right-hand turn, went down Benita Beach Road and then did, and did he, and that's just one example. I don't know if there's, there must be other examples like that.
There certainly are. A good example is the light at, across from Buffalo Chips up on Old 41. Some of these lights are older and Luke Street is a good example. And what they don't have are the cameras. There's two types of cameras that you kind of need to keep your eyes out for and they're more at our modern intersections and our newer intersections like Shangri-La Light on Imperial will have it. It's a camera system that they're using to count and run the traffic programs to trigger those lights. But the older lights don't have them. It's around a $15,000 to $20,000 fix.
But what you're indicating, though, is that there's a system to synchronize the light and read the, read the live traffic conditions where you don't have to be digging up the road and putting in sensors. These are run by cameras.
Yeah, that Ted confirmed my guesstimate that there was. There's also, you can also connect by wireless, but that you have to have a real good clear line of sight. And they're, and he did mention the railroad, that that was the holdup getting under the railroad with the fiber optic. But they don't, they're not going to tie the two together, but each one would have its own controller or computer, but the computers could talk back together, talk back together.
You know, Fred, I really think the world of that idea because even, you know, when you go to Benita Bay, if you're heading north and you want to take a left into the Benita Bay like we do for the Rotary meetings, you sit there forever. But when I went to, when I go to San Francisco, I'm amazed how quickly those lights change.
Oh, yeah.
You sit there, maybe 20 seconds at the most.
Yeah, and it'll change probably as a fun, I would say this, I think I told Carl one day, when I called him to ask about signals, I said, "You know, if I didn't know better, somebody screwed around with the lights to make it look like Benita Beach Road had failed because this was the worst traffic jam season that we've ever had."
Do, 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 yeah.
Great, Fred. And I heard about that too, by the way.
What was his answer?
Oh, of course. I got it all, the good, the bad, and the ugly.
I want to know what his answer was.
The ugly, right.
Did somebody fool around with the signals?
The what?
I heard it all.
Did somebody fool around with the signals?
No, well, I mean, you could. I didn't, I didn't say the, I said, "If I didn't know better, I thought that had happened."
I know Carl's for one's glad I'm not knocking on doors around town anymore. We got to hear about everything, didn't we, Carl?
Yeah. He calls up one day, he's got three more things for us to do and I'm like, "When is this election over? Are you actually asking them, is there anything we can do to fix things?"
Yeah. No, but through that, and I make light of that process, right? When you are out, and we all are, out in the community, we're all going to pick up and hear different things. So to the end, and maybe not to say we should move on, but if we can figure out or speak to the, you know, the appropriate folks to get this swimming synchronized on our lights, I think that would be a great initial step with some traffic.
Yep, we'll do that, sir.
Yeah, great.
Absolutely.
Great.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, a couple of things, I'm actually going back now a little bit. For your information, we've put in front of you the council adopted vision, mission, and values from the 2014 strategic plan. As you can see, the vision is a little bit longer. And then behind that is the comp plan.
That, though, is okay.
Okay, just so you have copies of that. Also, I want to add in terms of Councilmember Forbes' concerns about coordination, at least right now, what we've got going is because we've got Tool and we've got McMahon working these traffic studies, we do actually have a phone call scheduled for Friday between them so that there is a staff presence there and they're talk, we're all talking to each other. So I just want to make you aware that at least for now, those are the steps we've taken to kind of keep everyone in the loop.
Right. Is the McMahon person who's doing the quadrant study the same as doing the bike thing?
The firm is the same.
Right.
You know, he probably has staff working for him.
Right.
But he's the, he is the primary point for, person on both projects. John DePaul. And you'll see him here Wednesday night.
And this may not be a logical place for me to say what I'm about to say, but I'm just, before I forget it, we're talking about the, going back to your quarterback statement. And, you know, as we have like downtown Old 41 and we had, I think it was around $300,000 in PR for that project.
325.
Right, okay. I'm not sure what's going on there in terms of PR, but to that end, do we need different PR for the Old 41 project as the Benita Beach Road visioning project versus whatever? I mean, I'm not saying they should all necessarily one be the same, but I don't necessarily know that they should all be different either. So I just wanted to, with that stray random thought, lay that out there too.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, respond.
Yeah, yeah.
So I know the number for PR and communications for downtown was significant, okay, in the eyes of quite a few people. But we can tell you that had that person, Chris Sella, not been doing this, it would have been a staff function, we would not have had the personnel to do it. She walks the corridor regularly, she communicates with the business people, and I'm looking at John and John's, John and James are shaking their head yes, that she communicates regularly with the business people down on Old 41. I'm not sure the message is always a happy one, but at least the message is there. Plus, we've had significant issues with signage and making sure that the signage was appropriate to making sure the businesses were seen, that they were open and what direction to go. We started off with little blue directional signs, were not effective. Chris Sella's the one that came up with the idea of making these large banners, they're in color, they've got the logos of the businesses and directions to get them to. That is, it's been worth its weight in gold in terms of making sure that our business people, our main constituents down there undergoing the construction situation are communicated with and that they have somebody primary to communicate back to if they've got concerns that need to be resolved. Chris Sella brings them directly back to Wright and gets them fixed. So I just want to make sure you understand her role a little.
Yes.
Are we going to here or at another location talk about different issues with Old 41?
That's on this list.
Absolutely. And I think before we move on, John has a comment.
I would just like to speak to the fact that Chris Sella has made a very important contribution to that project. Without her, without somebody to say, you know, "Listen, my doors, I can't get out my door, I've got to close today if you don't get somebody down here to take," she's handled that and she's handled it repeatedly for many of us. I think it's a very important position that needs to be maintained and any project that happens in these business districts.
And I guess, and I guess a dollar value there that I would argue moving forward, we need to competitively bid and not just sweep into a broad package. One man's thoughts.
Shall we move on to Bike Ped?
Oh, so the Old 41 is a different.
That's Dan LaM.
Okay, fine.
Is that right with you?
Yes, sir, yep.
Great, you're right, move on to the next.
Yeah.
All right, yeah. So I'll read them out if that helps. Bike Ped Initiatives, Complete and Commence Execution of Master Plan for Bike Ped Connectivity in the City. Review the 2011 Bike PAC Study. And for those who don't know, there was a study done, it was around 2011, for bike corridor under, kind of playing off under the power lines, the east power lines, the ones over by the highway. That was really a nice piece of work. And at one time, there was over $100,000 in the budget to pursue that, that was taken out in 2012. Eight is, really, it's a subset of six, I guess I could say, but Determine Preference for Separated Bike Lanes as Proposed by the Federal Highway Administration for Transportation Safety. That is clearly the way the feds are going and they're picking up on actually what's been done in Holland and frankly, all around America, which is as much as possible get the bikers away from the cars. I mean, the notion that we have a quote "complete street" on US 41 where you got cars going 70 miles an hour next to a poor guy or girl in a three-foot wide thing is not, you know, it's not really a complete street. It's called that, but it's really not. Nine is Integrate Bike Ped Transportation Plan with Vehicular Transportation Plan into a Coordinated Multimodal Plan. Ten is similar, we already talked about ten, so I could skip that. So that's whatever thoughts people have.
Fred?
Well, I have, I have one because I believe any week now, the board education is going to move on site for the high school.
Tomorrow night?
Tomorrow. So if it goes in up at Imperial Parkway, there's areas up there that, I know one of the concerns, I think, that people in Hawthorne, if they aren't concerned about and they should be, there's natural cut-throughs that the kids would either bike or walk through their community to get to the high school. And I think we ought to make sure that we use some of these funds that we're going to come up with hopefully to fix those so that they don't cut through, but provide a safe, safe way and all that.
That's a very good point.
Maybe some point on that could be added.
I think the school board should be the ones to fund that instead of the city. Because, I mean, the school board's going to be the ones putting the detriment to the commu, to the, to that community. I mean, I think that they.
The shield sword, right?
Yeah, they should, I mean, at least Hawthorne should go to them first and then if the school board turns them down, then come to the city.
And the interlocal agreement with the Lee County, is there a provision for who is responsible for things such as sidewalks and all that, or are we supposed to do the infrastructure?
It is, it normally will be negotiated between the two, but at this point in time, the school board, with the exception of one thing that they've asked for, they plan to handle all the infrastructure needs and the buffering and things like that. They plan to do that themselves. I don't know what they plan with regards to, you know, sealing the natural cutoffs, I don't, or cut-throughs, I don't know about that. The one thing they have asked us to consider is partially funding the second street light, traffic light, that's going to be on Imperial Boulevard north of Shangri-La. They've asked us to share in that to the tune of half, which could be $250,000. $250,000. We haven't given them an answer, it's just.
It's also a policy that they're trying, they want to place schools in places where the children can walk and bike so that this is, you know, something that needs to be considered by them and certainly by us. But again, that area should be integrated with our other plans. We can't just have a nice, you know, we can't just make it bikeable and walkable for all the high school people to get to the, to the high school because it should, it has to go somewhere, you know?
Right.
So it's part of this coordinated plan that I think is illustrating that, you know, I think this whole section in here needs to be a coordinated plan with the rest of it. So we have to look at all the different studies that we have and see how they work together.
And I think part of that problem is the wall that's right there on Imperial. You can't get out of the, like, the creek area to get onto the sidewalk. So they have to go up to Old 41 and around and that's what's forcing them to kind of sneak through on one. So we need a way for them to easily get out to the sidewalk there.
Right. Pop in that hole, pop a hole right there and put a gate there or put just a natural wall.
They have asked about the possibility of that occurring.
Right.
To allow for a break in the wall for them to get to the sidewalk and then walk north.
Yeah, all I'm proposing is perhaps McMahon, when they're looking at the bikeable, walkable stuff they're doing, they could look at that area. I'm not saying we would fund it, but it's having some ideas that would solve some of these problems is a good thing, whether we end up having to pay half the bill or all the bill or the school board.
Well, I think the other thing that we should probably do, and I do it on a regular basis only because I have a daughter that goes to high school. I mean, prior to her getting her driver's license, we took her to school every day because we thought that was important. Point being is that very rarely did I see kids walking to a sterile or biking to a sterile high school. I mean, Mayor was there on, I mean, for the, for the Mustangs, there's not, even though you're surrounded by neighborhoods, there's not a lot of kids walking because by the time you hit high school age, you're 15, 16, 17 years old, you're looking for that first car and you're driving to school. You're not walking to school. And I just know, I mean, I grew up on Fort Myers Beach and went to high school and it was, you rode the big yellow school bus until you found a friend or somebody like that that lived on the beach or near you that would pay 20 bucks a week, take you to school. So I think that's the thing, not to say we shouldn't look at that, but I don't think it should be that big of a staff.
You know, one thing I would, one thing I would add, though, is that, and I know this, I disagree with you, the middle school has a great potential for bike connectivity.
Exactly.
Going up the north side of Pine and cutting over to 41 would be great for those kids who.
Oh, for them, it's great. Yeah, I agree.
So that's part of, I assume, of what McMahon is doing, looking at that. It would be great if kids could bike to the elementary school safely.
Yeah, I agree 100% with that.
Bike to the hills.
I'm just saying that to Fred's, to Fred's thing, to the high school age kids to focus on that area for high school kids to ride or walk to school. Middle school, elementary, 100%.
Yeah, but I think there is a major difference between probably the economic demographics, the families that live within that two mile of this high school and possibly the high school.
And they're all close.
I don't know that, but I would suspicion that.
Start a biking club.
One thing I would say, Carl, about this is it would be great if we could move McMahon up in time, McMahon, the September McMahon, the bike part, because it really is multimodal transportation that should be integ, in my opinion, that should be all integrated together. It's not like there's the bikes and then there's the cars. It should be looked at cohesively.
We can speak to him to see if he can expedite that schedule.
Especially if it's going to have some type of budget line item to do anything with. If we wanted to move on anything that he would suggest.
Yes.
By September, it'd be too late.
Right. Anything else on these items, guys? So we move on to the next.
Yes, it's fine by me, it's good with everybody else.
Community aesthetics. Develop a coordinated protocol of pleasing urban design standards for city-controlled features, including but not limited to minimizing municipal signage, reduction of cyclone fencing, dealing with rusted guardrails, using bright yellow, crossing street ADA pads and the like. Two, develop in consultation with FDOT a plan for a signature entrance to Benita Springs as a welcoming feature that will clearly announce to visitors the entrance to the city. I think we've all heard one way or the other that there's the potential, that FDOT has money for entrances to cities in terms of, what the right word is, but I'm going to call it big bang landscape. And, you know, so that's a possibility. Other people, I know the mayor has talked over time, something else there to make a special statement about your entering Benita Springs, not just anywhere USA.
You may see that again, folks, that idea, by the way.
Thirteen, work with the Art and Public Places Board to determine the feasibility of placing statuary at strategic places in the city as called for in the comp plan. They've done a great job and I know Arlene has, working with them in terms of the art we are bringing into the city. And why not try to give them a mandate to look out beyond the parks, if possible? Obviously, there could be issues, promo con, something to think about. And it is what was in the original comp plan. Fourteen, progress plans for improving landscape medians throughout the city. Fifteen, review landscape plans for US 41 and implementation, that's what's been done already.
Peter, can I stop you there just for half a second? Because, and Matt, could you come up just for a second? I just want to, as we're talking about landscaping and I know I had my thoughts and I know Carl's heard my thoughts and I know Matt has heard my thoughts. We are in what I would call Phase One of what we did with landscaping, maybe we can pick a number to it. Can you talk through why areas like Terry Street, as I've called it, and people have heard me say, looks like the Taj Mahal? And then on 41, we had areas where there were trees, where trees were taken out and why, in a lot of people's minds that I do hear about, we fell short of what we were trying to accomplish on 41 and other areas? And why people in different part of the cities, you know, feel good, bad, or indifferent about Phase One?
Sure. There's a few factors to the questions you just raised. One, and chiefly, is really a sense of scale. The right-of-way width that you have on East Terry Street is smaller than what you have in terms of US 41. Normally, that's not to your advantage for things like bike and pedestrian facilities, but in this case, the ability to enclose it in, so to speak, with landscaping is much greater because it's, it's just not as wide a distance that you're trying to, to close in. That comes to a secondary factor, which is, is dollars. The amount of dollars, we certainly can, can look at adding. The amount of dollars, we certainly can, can look at adding, or, you know, there's potential to add landscaping on US forty-one in certain areas to get more of that feel that you, you inherently sense on East Terry Street in terms of the enclosure, to, to make up for the, the width. But there are a couple, a couple of factors that have limited that. One, there are pre-existing billboards that, that are throughout the corridor, and they are pretty well protected by state law. As we went through this process, they invoked their privileges to deny us landscaping. Some landscaping that had previously existed with the, the, the first project was actually, they asked us to remove, and-
So by improving, we may have gone backwards in some people's minds, because once the project started, follow, follow that thought for me. We had to rip out existing vegetation?
In certain areas, some vegetation that, that, that was-
That looked great.
With the view shed of the, the billboard was removed and was not allowed to be placed back, because we do have to work through their-
Oh, why was it taken out to begin with?
I can't speak to that, I was, the designer chose, it was part of his design, who was Christian Busk, so that, that was a function of his design. Thirdly, we do have safety requirements along US forty-one. I don't know whether it's thirdly or not, I used that transition.
Fourthly, we'll call it fourthly.
Fourthly. But, but there are safety considerations, and we have those on any roadway, but as you, as you have higher speeds, and, and really that plays into the, kind of the final factor for what you see on Forty-one is, it's not the city's roadway. We are in a partnership and through a license permit with FDOT. So I think there's some opportunity there to, to get a little more of a feel, but I don't want you to think that you can, if, there are some limitations. So we would have to work with those to, to get that feeling, but I thi- I think the primary answer to your question really is a sense of scale. The volume of trees that you have on East Terry Street, given the right-of-way width, do make it feel more, more lush and more landscaped.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Matt, could you go into just a little bit more detail on the design speeds and distances between trees?
Uh, we did run into something that you wouldn't notice if you were driving US forty-one, but our design speed, FDOT's design speed for the roadway from the Collier County line north to South Bay Drive is actually for a fifty-five mile an hour road, not a forty-five. And so that led to some safety restrictions in terms of tree spacing within the medians that were further. We had to, we had to distance the trees a little further than we did north of that area, which led to a more spread-out field.
The only thing I would suggest is, we might work a little harder to crack the bureaucracy. Because when you go south of Woods Edge Parkway, that's the same roadway, it may be posted separately, but the design speed, not the posted speed, is obviously the same. It's the same exact roadway. And that landscaping in Collier County, just south, is beautiful. And I remember sitting in this room, and Councilman Slack was said, three years ago, we want to be actually better than Collier. And the notion, when you go north of Bill Smith's, on Woods Edge, it's not, it's, it's not better than what we had before, it's, it's maybe less than we had before. So somehow, Collier County has figured out how to work with FDOT to put in that type of landscaping. And, you know, I know we worked with someone who's involved with Collier, I'm familiar with that, but, and I know you're, you're dealing with FDOT, which we've talked about it, you were dealing with FDOT engineers. But it would be, it would be good to try to crack that code the way Collier was cracking. I'm not saying you have a trouble.
And just, you know, here again, and we've, I've, we've got some comments and thoughts over here, just one last question. In any project, you have a team that starts initially, certainly on this Phase One, as I'll call it. Was that the same team that finished Phase One, as started Phase One?
You mean in terms of design, sir?
Just in, in, in implementation. Well, execution. A to Z.
It, it was the same designer, yes. The designer did lose some of his team members throughout the process, but it was his vision, his design. Internally, I lost some staff in terms of oversight and, and replaced them, so specifically, no, we, we lost team members here on the city side, as well as on the designer side. But continuity-wise, yes, it was the same team, it was-
Okay, all right, good. Thanks, Matt. Go ahead, Amy, I'm sorry.
I just gotta comment, you know, my impression from driving along Old Forty-one is that there are certain areas that could be improved than others. There's some that are okay, so it might be useful for us to identify those areas that we wanna concentrate on, and then, you know, maybe we can make small improvements or so, little sectional improvements, and then see if we have success there, and then move on to the next one. Because with landscaping, it's never at, it's never over, you know, you could always improve, and, and I think maybe that should be the goal, you know, using some of the suggestions to work with FDOT to do that. Because I don't think it's hope, I mean, I don't, my impression, it's not hopeless, but there are things that I think could be better.
Fred?
Yeah, well, I, kind of piggybacking on what Amy has just said and Peter said. Number one, maybe, maybe you need to, this is one essential, we maybe need to get adways built. Secondly, where you're prohibited from putting in the trees because of a, one of these lovely billboards that we're blessed with having, you can't tell me that we can't put in nice lower shrubs and things that would at least provide something other than grass, I, I would think. I'm not, you may, you may be gonna tell me we can't.
Councilman-
No, please, please, right, you go first, please.
The restriction is, is four feet. So anything that has a potential to grow above four feet, we ran into significantly strong headwinds with our partners in the billboards.
But, but you have, there's all kind of nice attractive stuff, it's three feet, and you just maintain it a little bit.
Absolutely.
I do agree with what Councilman Slack just said, that, that should be the showplace instead of what we ended up with. And if anything, I think that there are parts of Terry Street that are a bit overdone. You could almost take and move some of that over to some of these other areas.
I've heard that, too. Sense of scale, but, come on, our sense of scale's not that warped.
So Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the billboard rule is a five hundred, five hundred feet view shed. So anywhere you can spot that billboard from five hundred feet has to be cleared.
Yes, sir, and it, it goes to the, to the back copy, sorry, I don't know the other way it goes, but if you're reading from right to left, it's, it's the far corner, so you draw that angle, and it comes off an angle of five hundred feet.
Pretty amazing.
Anything else for Matt at the moment, because this gentleman's been waiting patiently?
No, I think just in Matt's defense is that there was an architectural drawing of what it was supposed to look at, and that stayed the whole time, right?
Yes, sir.
If, I have a question, was that his original plan for down by Woods Edge?
There've been modifications, as I mentioned, there's no billboards in that area, but there's, was some modification as with any project as you move forward, but overall, it pretty well was his-
They ran out of trees, they were on Terry Street. They missed the count.
Yeah, right.
Well, and here, here's the reality, a landscape plan, unless you're kind of educated in it, it doesn't do a lot for the, most people, including the city council. The elevation or a three-D view will do a whole lot more. And I, I do know that he had elevational views of what was gonna happen at the intersection of Forty-one and Beach Road, but that's the only place that saw any elevations, ever. I don't, in fact, I think he said he didn't have any.
That's correct, sir.
You gonna let Matt off the hook for now? All right, Matt, your excuse-
I'm gonna blame him anyway.
For the moment.
Thanks, buddy, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, I'm Jim Worcester, and I have just a couple of quick comments about landscaping. You mentioned here some special places, and Benita Springs is gonna have coming up roundabouts on Old Forty-one, possibly in other areas. The center of the roundabouts are absolute perfect place to create a landscape scheme that splashes the city. It's being done today all over the country, and it really, really makes a difference. It, it softens the impact of the traffic that uses the roundabout because of the landscape scheme, whatever. In the future, you're gonna have a bunch of these.
Another area of complete agreement, right, Jim, roundabouts? Thanks, Jim.
There is.
Yes, yes, please. Um, Fred, go ahead while he's coming on.
Oh, no, well, the only thing I was gonna say, and, and this is a point about Old Forty-one, but you know, they are putting, there are already a bunch of them planted, live oak trees where you're in little open areas in the sidewalk. I can tell you from just Hunter's Ridge, that live oak trees next to paving is not a good thing, the roots are destructive, and then periodically you have to pay some guy to cut the roots that come up out of the ground out. And it would seem to me that if we were gonna do anything, we ought to get the few that are in, move them some other place and put a different tree, somebody said a black olive tree or something like that, but something that does not have destructive roots. I think it would pay off dividends down the road.
They also make a mess on the sidewalk, too.
Oh, that's the other thing, twice a year, minimum, you're gonna be tracking stuff into people's-
Come on back, man.
You just sit up front.
Matt, grab a chair, grab a chair. Sorry. Yeah, go ahead now.
If you don't mind, because this will actually probably bring up something on that. I, am I to understand, or are we to understand, that we have an agreement that kind of cuts out old growth trees? Because to me, I don't really wanna live in a town in heaven, as you've heard me say many times, fifty-seven years, to where we're having things tore out. And, and, and then we had a lot of nice-looking trees along Benita Beach Road and Forty-one and like that, and then we spent all this money, and then we had these trees that looked like old growth trees, and now they're tore out. And, and from what I'm gathering, from what Matt's saying, we have created an agreement or, that we're bound by, by, with billboards, that make it to where we can't have this kind of thing. I'll give you an example that really disgusted me, was over at the cemetery. When, when they put that thing, that billboard in that just slapped us in the face, and then we're just bound by that, from what I understand. And, I mean, to me, it's disrespectful to the people that are laying in that cemetery. One of them's my father, and my mother-in-law, and many other people that I know, and, and our families, and it's just anyways.
No, no, very, very good point, Alan, thank you. Yes?
Just a second. Answer this.
Sure. That'd be great, yes, that'd be great.
We're not into any, any agreements, sir, with the billboards, the states into an agreement with the billboards, through, through a straight law, state law. So they've, unfortunately, they have really protected and then bound the hands of local municipalities in what can be planted within that view shed. So, so they're, they're protected.
But could we, as a, as a community, require that if any old trees are taken out, that they have to get a variance, and we don't have to agree to that? And once they're in there, it's just the new growth that they have prohibitions against, right? Or is it the old growth?
I would defer to our city attorney, because I believe, unfortunately, some of that state regulation is, is fairly written in favor of the-
Oger, I think the short answer is, the billboard owner can get trees cut, right?
Yes. Even if it's old?
I'd have to research it for any exceptions, but I don't think so.
Okay, thank you. Let's get rid of this thing.
There was a second question, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, Fred was talking about the live oaks, I think, next to the sidewalk with the roots.
I don't think there's a lot, and I know experience has not been good with them.
We, we certainly can change them, if that's, if council would like to-
Is that down in your area, Fred? Where is that specifically that you're thinking about? The live oaks next to the sidewalk.
Down on Old Forty-one, or not too far from Mike's bike shop. They're across, I know they're, they're in the sidewalk between, you know, a curb, and then there's an opening and a tree.
Thoughts there, Matt?
Well, the landscaping plans currently are essentially call for those trees, they were, they were part of the project. We certain, we have the flexibility, if council asks us to change that out, we certainly, you could do a couple of things, we could bring the landscape designer back in and, and have him bring some ideas. I know the intent in those plantings is to provide shade.
Right.
So that you have a shaded sidewalk, like you just brought up earlier. And yes, they do create messes, and, and they do, quite frankly, the, the issues with roots, they, they grow roots. The previous ones that were planted were underneath power lines, and we tried to save those, but they were at the extent of their life because of how they've been proved.
I, I, I'd like to make a point, and this is by, this is why I got so much gray hair. I've administered in my day lots and lots of big construction projects, and some small and medium-sized, some on the fifty, seventy, eighty million dollar. And I've learned the hard way that if you see a problem in construction before it's done, it's much cheaper to jump on it and fix it then than to go ahead and let it finish out. The trees will look nice now, but they will cause a lot of headaches for the city. I've got some other observations about Old Forty-one, but I, just let me know when I should make them.
No, I was just gonna say, in our community, we have the, I don't know, we're, we're running into that trouble with the live oaks, and I think they've only been in like fifteen years, so you, you start to have difficulty early, not, you know, it's, fifteen years is not that long a time, so if we could do an alternative and still have shade, that's okay with me.
And we, and we could replant those.
We could ask the landscape, the architect, you know, what his opinion about these concerns that have been raised. Because we're not landscapers.
Yeah, we, we could take those ones that we pull out.
Sounds like Fred is.
And plant them, plant them, well, an architect does do anything. But you could replant them in locations where they're not gonna impact sidewalks, curves and all that.
I'm meeting with our, I do run landscape-
But they're mess.
-in our community, and we're re- meeting with a landscape architect this week, so I'll ask him that question about the person else.
What I can say, and, and I'm not a landscape architect, is they're always looking for shade trees, and, and really the other solution is, they have roots as well, probably not as aggressive as the shady lady black olive, the variant of the black olive. But I, I know the intent was for shade, and Councilman Forbes is exactly right, if, if that's what council would like to see, or, or some change to that effect, now is the time to do it. We have that flexibility, but with landscaping, you don't wanna let it put out roots, so to speak.
Sure, sure.
Uh, the longer it stays in the ground, the, the less resistive it, or the more resistive it is to being relocated.
Right. So is council comfortable, we take care of that issue?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hey, by the way, just so Matt's not alone, on, on the tunnel causeway over to Miami Beach, they were putting multi-million dollar landscaping, they put it in, and there's a sign that's on a hospital, and they said, uh-uh, they had to tear it away.
Oh, gosh.
So, that's Florida law.
There you go, man. Thanks, buddy. Thank you. Oh, yeah, there you go. Yes.
I'll be real quick, as an underground utility, we just want you to be conscious also of roots and the water lines and the sewer lines, because when you have a storm event, that'll, that'll be what will destroy the, the utility lines. Also, lightning struck a tree in Pelican Landing and shot right into the waterline and actually blew it apart because the roots were wrapped around it. So just something to keep in mind.
Sneak up here, hey, folks. The people have elected, what I believe are reasonable people, from each district, been elected by, and, and you're elected by the people. And I believe you all have common sense. Where we get in trouble, where I can see where we're getting, and it makes it more complicated, is we've got, well, we got Lee County government, and we got the state government, and then we get the federal government, and then we have locals that are trying to coordinate the whole thing. It's a really, before city manager has the job of coordinating all this, and, and he does a wonderful job, as far as I'm concerned. I believe that each district is unique in some aspect, and that each city councilman should represent their district, find out what the district really needs, rather than having seven mayors. We seem to have, like, everybody wants, seems to be the mayor, where are they really representing their, the people that elected? This is a comment I have on that. Now, as far as these roundabouts, I see we're being invaded by roundabouts. It's a European concept, built around Rome, where they had the archa-triumph with a big circle around it, and it's a, the city's laid out in a wheel and spoke system in Paris. And my recommendation is, let's- And my recommendation is, let's let the other part of the county build these roundabouts and see how they work, because we got a big problem here with 41 with this. 105 million people visited Florida last year, that's unbelievable, that's a third of the population of the country came to Florida last year. I don't, don't know what they did this year, but it, it's seasonal, certainly, certainly it's seasonal. And now, the coordination of the lights, Lee County's job, and they change from season to not season, you know, it's, it's a really complex issue. But it's something that's beyond the, beyond the city's ability to change 41 to change Benita Beach Road, these are all county roads and state roads. Good luck working on that, you know. Well, we, we keep trying, and as I say, I think we ought to work on, each district has its own problems and needs, and, and bring that to the council, rather than all trying to figure out how the county's gotta do this, or the city's gotta do this, so let's really represent our local people. Thank you very much.
Peter, I wonder, at the risk of having Mr. Worcester be embarrassed, I want to say a few words and ask him maybe to come up and say a few words about roundabouts. You know, we've talked in the past about getting people from gated communities finally involved and get out from behind the gates, and we have plenty of them on our boards. Jim Worcester is another one, he's in the audience. He actually is one of the, this is where he's gonna get embarrassed, he's one of the country's leading lights on roundabouts, he built one of the biggest design engineering firms in the Midwest, over a 60-year career, has a lot of experience with that, and I'm, I'm thrilled that he's got to get involved in the city and for free, offering over 60 years of design experience. So, Jim, I don't know if you would mind coming up and saying a few words about roundabouts generally?
And if you would, tell Oger to know. Thank you, Jim.
My history goes, I'm from Indiana, my history goes back to the middle 50s when I got out of school, and got in the transportation business, the beginning of the interstate highway system, was involved from that beginning till I retired 10 years ago. The roundabouts in several areas of the country, and there's a specific city in the northern, north of Indianapolis called Carmel, that 40 years ago was a very rural community. Today, it has over 100 roundabouts in a, about 100, 100,000 population generally. And, and they, they just have a program now where they're gonna put another 100 that goes out into the county. Because it's been so effective, it moves traffic, sure, there was a learning curve for everybody on driving them, but they're way over the, they got over it very quickly. Your cost of operating a traffic signal goes away, you have a little bit of maintenance on the, on the road, road and roundabout, it's not there at a four-way intersection, but a very, very small increase in cost. The ability to move traffic through roundabouts is probably 40 percent, there's, there's been many studies, there's been many universities studying the situation, in fact, there's videos available online where they set up an intersection with a four-way stop, they set up an intersection with a cop out in the middle directing traffic, and all these spokes are leading, leading, filled with cars, they have that many people participating in this. And then they did the roundabout. Well, they can move twice as much traffic through a roundabout as they can through a four-way stop or a, have an officer at the center of the street trying to drag traffic, which obviously is.
Or a stoplight, Jim, or may, maybe any other method that you could think of, right?
Yes, I was gonna get to that. And, and stoplights, they are more efficient because they keep traffic moving, the, the volumes are 15 to 20 percent more. There are no question limits on roundabouts. You can't put a roundabout on Tamiami Trail, it's just too much. Because of the queuing to get into the, it's making people slow down in the queue, it doesn't work. But, on lesser, lesser volumes, it, it has, and up this, say 30,000 or 40,000 vehicles a day, that would be near the, the top, that where you could do a roundabout, properly designed, there's computer programs available now that will take traffic volumes, traffic movements, you can plug the numbers in, and they'll tell you what radius the roundabout needs to be, how the, how it should be configured, how many lanes should be involved entering in the roundabout, the size of it, and it's really a designed gimmick to move traffic today that 40 years ago was unheard of in United States of America. But it's, it's spreading, and it's very popular, and I'll be happy to answer any questions anyway.
Could you give them an example? I think a lot of people associate the old traffic circles, like Dupont Circle, which are huge, as, as a roundabout.
Or the Château de Lysé in Paris.
And they, and they do have problems as a good truck.
Well, yeah, there are eight lights for all kinds of cars, but Sarasota is, is putting roundabouts in along 41, right back from the beach, just east of the beach, they're, they have a huge project up there, Lakewood, has a program with roundabouts, it is underway. A lot of it completed, I'm not sure how much more they have planned up there. But I can tell you, the city of Carmel, just recent, in Indiana, just recently put in their three-year budget, plan for 100 more roundabouts to do, do away with the four-way stops situations. They're also doing an express, expressway, they did one, an expressway that had underpasses, and that, that doesn't work here because of the groundwater situation, and you don't want to put an elevated deal in, I don't think I know. But you can do, they are putting roundabouts at the end of the interchanges, terminals, and so people don't have to stop, they just, no traffic signals at the roundabout, or, excuse me, at the intersections created by an interchange, it's all done with roundabouts. And it moves thousands of cars a day. And there's another project, Fishers, Indiana, which is right to the east, that's about to be, be started for, I think it's seven miles, a state highway that's, used to be rural, today, it's, it's like Tamiami almost, but not, you know, it's, it became a city. And they're gonna do that same program there. And it, it's, it, people are convinced that it works, once they get used to it. Getting used to it is advertising, papers need to show details of what should happen, who has the right of way, it's real clear on roundabouts, the guy in the roundabout always has the right of way, and you have to yield to that person, as opposed to traffic circles. The older ones, the guy coming in had the right of way, it varied depending on how they signed them around the country. But today, it's, it's, it's new, and it, it works. I say new, it's not new today. It's, it's, it's implementable, because the history has proven them to work.
And I, I guess I would just have a comment and then a question. Growing up in New England, I know the difference between a roundabout and a traffic circle, like, you know, they came over from Europe, and obviously on the East Coast, I think the people that grew up there have the advantage of being comfortable and familiar with them, but is the basic premise, probably very basic, but that you can drive 40 miles an hour to a stoplight, and then obviously get yellow and have to stop, approach a four-way traffic at 15 or 20 miles, whatever it is, and then stop. But eliminate that, because while your speeds will be altered, there really is no stopping. It's continual movement?
No, not necessarily.
Okay.
In low volume, yes, but you're always yielding to people in the roundabout. So, as you approach the roundabout, you, you start looking to your left, because that, that's the only place you care about so much. People to the right are going the other direction. So you, you look for a hole, and as soon as you see the hole, you just crawl on in and go. And the people, the diameter of the roundabout controls the speed of the cars going around the roundabout. So, in multi-lane roundabouts, some, they need to be bigger, like a three-lane roundabout needs to be really, really big. A two-lane is really not so bad, you know, those are all over. The big trucks, tractor-trailer trucks, and fire equipment, all can work through a roundabout if it's properly done. What you do is, on the inside of the roundabout, you leave six to 10 feet for the back wheels to approach on, you have a small curb, a three or four inch curb, three inch curb typically, so you let the back wheels and the truck go on that as it goes around the roundabout. Fire engine, the big tractor, fire engines.
Thanks, Jim.
Questions to Jim, anybody? Great. Thank you. Thank you. Rick?
Theory's fabulous. Every intersection that has a traffic light's gonna have to be a roundabout, because if you stop the traffic, everything goes, everything stops, it doesn't work. Every intersection where people come and go is gonna have to be a roundabout in order to make this work right, in my opinion. We have too many intersections, too many stoplights to make this run smoothly, as far as I'm concerned. But I prefer to have somebody else in the county build one, see how it works, before we commit the city into building one of these that might not work very well for us. Thank you.
I just got passed a note here that for council and staff, lunch is ready whenever we're ready?
I'm ready for a break.
You're ready for a break? Do we want to make it a working lunch, or do we want to take a break?
Working lunch after a short break.
Working lunch after a, okay, it's 12:44, do we want to resume at 1:00? Does that sound working?
We're gonna have a working, yeah, because there's gonna.
Well, you said a break first.
Well, you said a break first, I'm trying, I don't know what, 12:50?
I'd like to visit some of those rooms after.
It's 12:45, why don't we have our lunches in front of us, and we'll resume at 1:00? Does that sound good?
Yeah.
Okay, great.